Okay, I think that it's six o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and start. This is the March 28th, 2018 Board of Directors Meeting for the Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority. We're recording this meeting, so I've been asked to ask each of you to put on your microphone when you're speaking. So with that said, will you call a roll?
Yes. President Frank Leffingwell.
Here.
Vice President Ron Ableson.
Here.
Secretary Stephen Thomas.
Present.
Citizen Director Corbin Van Arsdale. Citizen Director Renee Flores.
Here.
Citizen Director Andrea Nevareti.
Present.
Wonderful, thank you. Yeah. Item three is citizen communication. I have, it looks like I have one person who has asked to speak. If there are any other people who would like to speak, please fill out one of these and hand them off to our secretary here. And first up, I have Jesse L. Kenneth II. You have three minutes. If you need time at the end of that, you can ask at that time.
Good evening, President and Directors. I appreciate your time. I'd like to spend a few minutes to introduce myself to you. I'm an applicant for your general manager position, and I would like to share with you a little bit of my background, and I hope to have the opportunity to be able to interview for that position in the future. I've been a resident of the area since 1983. I graduated from Leander High School in 1986. I actually worked for three years in that building right there for the city of Leander. I started out working for the city of Round Rock back in 1986 for a year. So I've lived here since 1983, minus four years at Fort Rag, North Carolina, and two years in Iraq and Afghanistan in the military. I have deep roots in this area. I've owned homes in all three cities. I currently own a home here in Leander. I've worked for the city of Round Rock in Leander, like I mentioned earlier. My father was a public works director at the city of Cedar Park when I was in high school. I have a nephew that currently works at the city of Cedar Park. And I've got over 20 years of water and wastewater experience, 15 of those being in management. I've got 25 years military experience of active duty and full-time Texas Army National Guard. And I've spent the last 10 years as a board of director on Travis County MUD number 13 in Lakeway, including the last two years as board president. Had a meeting this week, as a matter of fact. And I would like to say that I do not have a bachelor's degree, but where I believe I can make up for that is in my double A certification with TCEQ, my years of experience in the water and wastewater business, including public works director at Brushy Creek MUD, general manager at Wells Branch MUD and River Place MUD, and countless other MUDs that I've managed in the three city ETJs. Also believe that my proven leadership in the military would go a long way to helping in this particular position that you have. And I do look forward to an opportunity to interview for the position in the future. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? All right. Thank you. Item four, item 4A, consider approval of the BCRUA meeting minutes for February 28th, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second motion, and a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, since I'm not familiar with your board, can you please tell me the names of who made the motion and second, since I'm not familiar with your board?
I think if my hearing is still intact, Ron made the motion, and Stephen made the second.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Item 4A is approved. Item 5A, consider an update on Phase Two final design SWIFT loan application and design firm selection process.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just a verbal update and some information for you on our design process on Phase Two final design. First, to the SWIFT loan, I received contact from Texas Water Development Board this morning telling me that their board will meet next Thursday, April 5th, and they will be approving the list of projects for funding this year, and our project will be on it, what we're requesting this year. And the deadline will be about a month away, just as it was last year, so that puts us at having to get our final and full application in by Friday, April 5th? I'm sorry, Friday, May 5th. And so, or 4th, May 4th. Sorry, I'm trying to keep too many numbers in my head at once. Friday, May 4th will be the deadline. And that'll be just like the process was last year, and we will need to get approvals and documents and resolutions through the BCRUA board and the city councils of Cedar Park and Leander. We will not be bringing the SWIFT loan package through the city of Round Rock this year because Round Rock has a substantial amount of savings left over in their Phase 1A loan funds. And they, we had asked if they could use that, and if in using that, that would create any problems for the other two cities, and the answer was yes and no from TWDB. There was no problem with us taking that approach, and it would have no negative impact on the other two cities. So I appreciate Round Rock being careful to make sure it didn't have a negative impact on their partners. So we're good to go. We have a lot of work to get done. I've been working closely with Aaron Archer with Walker, and also Gary Kimball with SPJ, and so we're putting the package together just about the same way we did last year. So we'll have a lot of documentation going to all of the different city staff to get this done. But I don't foresee any problems. It should be pretty smooth. And once we get that done, the board, the water board will approve the projects formally and the loans formally in July in one large package with all the people who are asking for money. It's about $2, $2.5 billion this year in this cycle. And if it follows the path we had last year, then September we'll be putting all the bond documents together, all the different bond councils and financial advisors will be working with TWDB. We'll close in October, and then we'll fund the bonds in November, which at that point then, we could start the final design of the Phase Two improvements. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about besides that, though, is the process of selecting the firm that will be doing the final design is something that the OC and I have been discussing recently. And our feeling is that if we wait until, if we wait to start that process until the bonds have funded, then we're gonna lose precious time. So we looked at what would be the best approach to move forward on this, and there's a lot of ways you could do it. I mean, one thing we could do is come forward and say to the board, "We're happy as a group with the work that Walker's done, and we believe we should continue with them in Phase Two final design." But it is a big project, and so the other extreme would be to say, "No, we go out and we do a full-scale RFP or RFQ, and we get thousands of pages of documents that cost the engineering firms that propose thousands of dollars to do that," and that also seemed to be too much for us to ask of them at this point. So I think the consensus, if there is one, is that a reduced statement of qualifications process would probably be appropriate here. We'll ask any firms that might be interested in talking to us about the work to submit a three- to five-page summary of what their experience in qualifications would be, and if we felt like as a group, the OC and I, that we should follow up and do more with them, we will. If not, we won't. So I think that's the fairest statement that I could make of where we're at right now. I would offer to the OC members that are here, if any of you want to add anything to that, please feel free to. But what I wanted to tell the board tonight is unless you guys have a problem with the SOQ approach, then what I'll do is work with the OC to put together the advertising that we would need to do, and then go through the process over the next couple of months and negotiate a contract. But before we start negotiating a contract, we would come back to the board and actually ask for formal approval to begin that negotiation process, just as we've done before. If the board agreed with that, then we would start, and the negotiation will be the thing that will take time. Probably take two or three months to actually get a contract of this size and scale, complete and ready to go, with everybody signed on to it, to bring it back to the board. And that contract, assuming that it was done before November, when our bonds will fund through the SWIFT program, that contract would then be contingent upon funding of those bonds. So the board and the three city councils would not be committing anything absolutely until and unless the bonds were approved and funded ultimately on the open market. And I think that makes the most sense. That way, we've got a contract in place, and as soon as the bonds fund in mid-November, we can get started with Phase Two final design, which will be a two-plus-year process. So we've still got a lot of work to do, even though we've got the preliminary engineering study done and a lot of the other issues that had to be done as well. But there's a lot more to be done. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments or discussion we might have, and again, to the OC, if any of you want to add anything to that, feel free to.
Well, I'll just add that Leander staff thinks that that's an unnecessary item. I can't imagine that we would pick some other engineer. We're at a 35%. Can you imagine? Otherwise, we're just playing a game. That's what we're doing here, 'cause I can't imagine that Walker wouldn't be picked in this selection process. We're gonna, I think it's eye-wash. Now, there may be one of the other cities that may need to do that for political reasons, and I'm certainly open to that, but I just want to express my opinion and opposition that I think it's just playing games.
Anyone else from the OC?
Crickets.
Crickets. I have a question. Pardon my ignorance on this, but what is the, what is the name of the abbreviated process that we would use to take the place of the RFQ? You had a name for it.
Statement of qualifications.
Statement of qualification. And that would be used, that would be used as part of a bidding process in place of the RFQ?
It's not a bidding process. It's a professional services process. And so we would be asking any firm that might be interested in our project to submit a summary, if you will, of their qualifications that specifically related to what our project will be, to try to make their case. And in general, I mean, I have to agree, basically with what Wayne is saying, it's hard to imagine that we wouldn't stay with the firm that we have right now. We're all happy with them. I know that no one has any problems with Walker. But at the same time, there have been concerns expressed that that's a big project to just start negotiating with Walker on, and so it might be reasonable to at least put something out there and allow other people to submit if they want to. I think that the chance of anybody else submitting is probably up in the air. We might not actually get anybody else.
That was, my next question was, based on the fact that there's 35% in, would somebody even entertain trying to, because they know it's, it would be a moot point?
Right. Wayne's point is valid. I mean, this is not the time to ask firms for other ideas. I mean, we're...
And also, I feel that, just based on Aaron's presentation many times, you know, for Walker Partners, that when they've looked at putting this together, they've actually had to travel the country, because this isn't something that is very common to do. So I think that they've already kind of done that due diligence there. Just want to make sure we're covered legally.
Yeah. Yeah, my questions really are based on the need that I'm gonna have to report back to my own council and my own mayor, so I want to make sure that I understand this. Are there any perceived disadvantages to this process, this statement of qualification process, over a full-blown RFQ? How would you begin to compare the two, other than want as much of...
Well, a full-scale RFQ would have a lot more detail to it. There's no question about that. But it would also require substantial effort on the part of any firm that was submitting it. That's why nowadays, the firms do tend to back off. Well, I'll give you an example. We used an RFQ process on the preliminary design when we put that out on the street, and I talked to a number of firms, and I know the OC members spoke to a number of firms, and the clock wound down, and I had one major firm that told me that they were gonna drive their proposal down from Dallas, that they had prepared it, and they didn't. And in the end, nobody, nobody went after it, because they felt like it was pretty clear that we were pretty satisfied with the service that we were getting from the firm that did the PER. And it's, there are firms nowadays, they're operating on such a short margin that they just will not go out and put a full-scale effort in if they don't think there's a reasonable chance to make money. They usually look for, I'll be honest, they usually look for a firm that stumbled. Something's wrong, you know, that there's some friction or problems.
So you think the use of an RFQ would have the effect of shrinking the pool if possible? Okay.
Yes, I think so. An SOQ, I can't even tell you, you'll get a lot of responses, just as Ron alluded to, even on an SOQ. But an SOQ, anybody can put together in an afternoon.
Sure.
They just want to call through the different projects, that the key team members that they would have, and that would be a big part of it. But Walker's got a good team, no question about it.
Oh, yeah. No doubt about that.
We have no complaints about the work that they've done. So while I'm sympathetic to what Wayne says, I mean, my heart goes with that, but my head says we're better off if we go through at least a short-term review of interest, if you will, from anyone else that's out there. But I'm open to other suggestions, if anybody has.
Any other questions? For Tom, or for the OC, or anyone? Any questions? Okay.
I would, what I'll do, if the board has no objection, is I'll touch base with the OC one more time, talk to them about it, and then make a final decision from there. There's no, nothing is committing the board to anything at this point. That's important for you guys to understand. And if we do go through an SOQ process, or we don't, either way, we'll be coming back to you with a request for authorization to negotiate a contract. We won't start that until you guys have given us the nod. And then the final steps will be bringing it to you and to all three city councils for their approval, because this will be a big contract, a lot more than half a million. But that's why it's good to do it now, because if we start that in November after the bonds fund, then we've lost three or four months on final design, and frankly, I don't think we have three or four months to lose right now. So that's why we'd like to get started, whichever direction we go, we need to get started with.
Can we ask the OCs from the other two cities if they have any opinions, please? I think Leander voiced theirs. Does Round Rock or Cedar Park have any...
Michael and Sam.
Opinions on this? Either way.
In regards to the whole project, part of the discussion we had as an OC was, HDR was the firm that was selected to do the preliminary engineering for Phase Two. So we're talking about Phase Two here. HDR, a lot of, you know, they've had a lot of change in the organization. Now, Walker Partners, we did the, we did an RFQ to do the Phase 1C project. They've done a great job. I don't disagree with anything that was said here. We like Walker and what they're doing. That was just part of the OC's discussion. Phase Two preliminary engineering was HDR. Now we want to go to Phase Two final design. If we go with Walker, how does that kind of look?
Was it under HDR? Was that still Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Okay. So it is still the same continuity?
Many of the, the folks at HDR have left, many of them are at Walker now. Many of the subcontract consultants that were on HDR's team are now on Walker's team. So, you know, there's no question, Walker, they're a good choice for us. We like what they're doing. It's just because it's such a large project, you know, hundred, over a hundred-something million dollar construction project, do we need to open it up a little bit because of that, because of that reasoning? We'll continue to talk about it, and whatever the board wishes, that's which way we'll go.
Okay.
But I want to say, we are happy with everything Walker's doing at this point, and I think that would be a good fit for that project just as well, so.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. President, board. Yeah, I would echo what Michael said, pretty much verbatim. I mean, it's kind of a policy decision. I think maybe we'll talk about it one more time, and you could do an abbreviated version and do it really quickly. You know, like Wayne said, you know, odds are Walker's gonna be the most qualified, because they have the most advanced knowledge of everything. But it's, but still, it is a policy question. It's legal, absolutely. So anyway, I think the suggestion that we visit Alvin Moore, come back with you, do you with a more firm recommendation, maybe might be one way to go. It's not an action item tonight, anyway.
That's right.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I, you look at, you know, some new part of the contract, $100 million. You don't want to get into a situation where you aren't doing procedure, I guess, of due diligence process. And so, and I, I know that my, my counsel was gonna ask those questions, did we go through to make sure that we're spending the money appropriately and correctly? Not say that they aren't gonna be the candidates, but it's just a process.
Well said. I think those are the concerns I was, I was speaking to. Renee, anything?
I'm not against a SOQ. I just think it keeps everybody honest, and it keeps us above approach, hopefully.
That's our goal.
Okay.
All right.
My only last suggestion would be, I don't, I don't think there's any, any difference between the two of them as far as cost for the BCRUA. If there isn't, then, you know, I just, or if there is, I'd like to make sure we're aware of it when you guys bring it back.
There would be a minor cost, but very minor. Advertising, that sort of thing.
As long, as long as that's elucidated, I'm fine.
But my goal would be to try to, one more time, to reach consensus in herding these three cats out here, so.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck with that. All right.
Thanks for your input, guys.
Item 6A, consider a resolution authorizing the President to execute a fourth amendment to the master contract for the financing, construction, and operation of Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority, Inc., Regional Water Treatment and Distribution Project, subject to the approval of the participating cities.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packet, I had a, tried to make it as short and sweet as I could, but a complicated memo that outlines what this is about. But let me see if I can summarize it, and I'll ask Steve to jump in and help me if I needed your page. What we, when we get ready to do a bond issue, which is essentially what we're doing with the SWIFT loan program through TWDB, is we have a bond council, in this case, the firm NPH, Richard Donahue, go through all of the documentation and make sure that what we're doing, what we're proposing to do, is consistent with our existing foundational documents. Richard reviewed our existing master agreement and said, "You know what, guys? You're getting ready to sell debt on Phase Two, and you actually don't have authorization to issue debt on Phase Two, only on Phase One." And so we looked through that and had to agree with him. He was right. So what we decided to do was put together a fourth amendment to the master agreement that specifically authorizes BCRUA to issue debt for limited beginning, early-phase-two items. And so that's what is attached as an exhibit to what you have before you tonight. And it specifically relates to the SWIFT loan that we're asking for right now. But what makes it complicated is the amount that you see on the exhibit is not the total amount that we're asking for on the SWIFT loan, because part of the SWIFT loan application relates to the capacity expansion that will occur in Phase Two, which, because of the way the documents were originally structured, actually is called Phase 1D. The expansion of the treatment plant from 30 to 42 million gallons per day is called Phase 1D. So it is already authorized within the master agreement. So what we've got in there is everything else. So that's as simple as a way for me to describe it as I can, but that's what we're asking for, and we have to have this before we sell the bonds. We don't have to have it before we submit the application and so on and so forth to TWDB. But we can't sell the bonds until this is in there. It's part of our due diligence, essentially. We won't get a sign-off from the outside council if we don't. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, Steve, but I think that's right.
So the amendment to the contract would enable this board and the participating cities to authorize the issuance of those bonds?
That's right.
Is that right? So the contract itself doesn't authorize the issuance of the bonds. It allows the participating cities, if they want to, to, through some action, to authorize the bonds, right?
That's right.
Issuance of the bonds.
Really, it's even more, I think it's even simpler than that. Really, what the amendment does is add to the definition of the project.
Okay.
So the master contract defined the project as Phase One, and then the master contract is limited to Phase One.
I see.
So basically, what it does is expand the definition of project to include a few specific items of Phase Two, which then allows for the authorization to borrow money to construct things, or at least to design things.
And Steve brings up a good point. When we talk about allowing Phase Two to be part of the description, that's where the exhibit comes in. We're only allowing these small pieces that everyone has agreed to in there. And I should point out that in the exhibit, you'll see there is some, there is a construction element to our SWIFT loan application this year for early-stage electrical construction that has to occur before the main construction in Phase Two. And that is not, that is not authorized at this time by Leander. They'll have to consider that at a later point. However, the city of Cedar Park did want to go ahead and get that bond money now and lock it in, so they've got it. So that's why you see that there. We'll have to continue discussions, and all three cities will have to agree to move forward on that, approximately $4 million, a little over $4 million worth of electrical improvements that will need to happen, but don't have to happen immediately.
Thank you, Steve.
I have a question. I'm not sure who to address it to. So if I understand this correctly, the master agreement was only for Phase One?
Correct.
So what was the plan when we were going to move to Phase Two? What were we going to do, and why haven't we done it yet?
Well, the contract specifically said, the master contract specifically says that it's limited to just Phase One, and that the parties anticipate that sometime in the future, they might go to Phase Two. But that would require either amendment to the master contract or negotiating a new contract between the three cities.
So why did, why did, since we've known that we were going to Phase Two, I don't know how long, why have we waited till now to address this? I'm just...
That's a good question. I don't have any...
Well, I mean...
Thought I heard that Bond Council just pointed this out. Is that right?
No, but I'm just saying, if you knew the master agreement was only for Phase One, we've been talking about Phase Two for how long? Why haven't we been proactive enough to have already gone to that point? I don't, I'm not, I'm just asking the question.
This board hadn't made the decision to do it.
But that's, that's an interesting comment, because we seem to be directed by the OC, so I think it was the OC hasn't directed the board about this.
The parties to the master agreement hasn't, didn't decide to go with Phase Two.
Yeah, see, and this is where, this is, again, comes up with my governance issue that we have about this. I mean, 'cause I, this is like, just the first time I've heard about this, and I think this is something we should have heard about. How long? Two years, at least? How long have we been talking about Phase Two?
Well, it's my understanding that there was not, I can sense this on the part of the three parties to move forward with Phase Two.
Well, that, again, that doesn't preclude you from coming up with a new document for Phase Two, because we all know it's about, it has to happen, so I don't understand why that would be the default reason why not to do it.
Well, part of the challenge here is trying to go back into the past, you know, well before my time, but...
My time as well. I mean, everybody I think up here is...
And there are some who could address this better than I, but my guess is what happened was, when they, when they started the project off, and they went to TWDB to begin with in the D-Fund program, they actually got authorization for over $300 million, which was estimated at that time to be enough to do, if not the entire project, just about the entire project. And I don't know if there was sticker shock among the member cities or not, but for whatever reason, there was a decision made to just go for with the Phase One elements at that time. Now, why Phase Two is not specifically mentioned in the master agreement at this point, I suspect that may be part of it. You also won't find Phase Three mentioned, or Phase Four.
Right.
I imagine they assumed at that time, it's pretty straightforward to add it, and we'll have more information in the future when we decide to add Phase Two, so why not just wait?
I have, I have no problem with that, but how long has, has Mr. Archer been working on design for Phase Two? I mean, that would have been the time, you'd think, that we would start thinking about that, right?
You raise a good point, and I should point that out. There hasn't been a problem to date with the work that's been done, because it, while it was Phase Two work, it was done with Phase 1A savings.
Yeah, I understand.
And actually, the Bond Council says that's not a problem.
Right. I'm, I'm aware, and I'm not, I'm not against what we're trying to do here with the amendment. I'm just trying to get historical data in, and trying to figure out, moving forward, how we can do this... we can do this without having to, to have to resort to something like this, instead of being, because I think it's, we're reacting because we have to now, because we just found out. We can't do it without actually doing this amendment, when we should have had that already in place. That's all I'm saying.
I hear what you're saying, but just from my work as a lawyer, I, it seems, if I understand how everything has come to be correctly, and that may not be the case, I mean, this is not unusual at all for us to anticipate that something is going to happen in the future, fully anticipate something's going to happen in the future, and say to ourselves, when that time comes, and we know better of what it is exactly we're going to do, and when we're going to do it, we will not only get the necessary approvals, but we will amend the contract at that time to allow for these options. So I don't know that it is that unusual. Ron, if I understand the whole issue correctly?
I'd love to add a little clarification.
Sure.
Because Phase Two's in lots of documents. There's a cost savings, there's a, there's a cost savings allocation agreement between the cities.
Right.
That we all proved that has Phase Two in it, and in that agreement, we all agreed to use the cost savings to Phase Two. The master agreement adopts preliminary engineering report, which references Phase Two all over the place. I mean, Phase Two is in agreement, and it's in documents, and I see this more as a housekeeping item. When we discovered that Table D in the master agreement didn't specifically identify Phase Two for cost allocation, that we just needed, it's just like a little box check, so that when the people at TWDB are reviewing our documents, they're like, okay, this is, this all makes sense. But, yeah, I just want to add a little clarification to that, because it's not like this is the first time we, the word Phase Two show up in an agreement.
Right.
They do.
Well, I think if it had been presented that way, it might have been a little clearer to me, anyway. But that's.
Well, if I introduced any confusion there, Director, I apologize.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? No? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, and a second?
Second.
All of those in favor of item six A, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item six A is approved. Item, item seven, Director closing comments regarding items of community interest. Renee Flores.
Nothing. Good night.
Andrea?
No, sir. Good night.
Ron?
I would just extend an offer to you guys. If you want to tour the facility, we can walk you around, come see the building. It's up to you, if you want to stick around. Got to show it all.
That's right. Nothing, Steve?
I'm good.
Nothing for me. Good night, and thank you.